This conference will now be recorded.
Day thirty, can stand for place?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, May twenty first, twenty twenty four. Weekly supervising meeting at that courthouse available by go to meeting also. Have agenda in front of us. Think at it, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And motion is our second.
Second.
Motion is second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Prove the minutes, we made fourteenth meeting. Just look at them, take a motion to approve the minutes. So move. Your motion is our second.
Second.
Your second. Any other discussion?
We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye. Motion passes. County Attorney General discussion.
Morning.
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 Just update a couple of things. Been pretty busy few weeks. Guess I wasn't here last week. I had another county thing going on, but so like I said, it's been a pretty busy few weeks and a lot of things that weren't a priority became a priority and some things got kicked aside and some things got put off top. Anyway, some of that's ironed out now. Supposed to be in trial this week, but that got resolved. So that I know that wind ordinance is still is still out there, so I'm gonna make some time this week. Hopefully, starting today, things, if I can stay in control of things a little bit, start review that. I don't suppose it probably takes, shouldn't take me that long. But anyway, just to update you on that and then I'll be in touch with you. Only other thing is, is I think Sheriff touched on this last week. Gonna probably be a grand jury proceeding going on in the county. I don't know when yet for sure. Have to get everything lined up. Grand jury proceedings are not something that are used very often in the state of Iowa. Most of the time, for example, when somebody is charged with a crime, they're charged by trial information, right? I put together trial information or William does. We sign it, swear that we that we think we know, you know, that what we're saying we think is true. Put together a summary of what we think the evidence would be, put it in a packet, file it, judge reviews it, judge thinks there's probable cause, judge approves it, right? Then that that starts the case going. Okay, that's best the way in Iowa it's done most of the time. Probably done that way in most states. Federal system, I think, still uses grand juries for everything, right? Where I think every grand jury has to do everything. There is no trial information, right? There is no reviewing it or putting together, judge reviews it, signs it, and off you go. The reason we can do that now was because, you know, the state said, well, that takes the place of grand jury, right? You know, if you got a judge approval, same thing, good enough. Feds don't really do that, right? Feds say, ah, you gotta use a grand jury. Because that's really what's at the constitution is grand jury. But anyway, long and short of it is, we're gonna use one here. And once, once those start, you probably won't hear very much about it. One thing, when it comes to government proceedings, one thing that is, tends to be very secretive is grand jury stuff. And so you probably won't hear a whole lot about it until maybe at the end when there's, you know, some result. So that'll take a little time. But I guess those are the two things I can think of at the current time.
Who decides if it's one or the other type of the trial? Who makes that decision?
Whether whether you do like trial information or whether you do a grand jury. Most of the time, it's law enforcement gets together with prosecutor and and they decide. Be perfectly frank with you, I've been up here, what, twenty seven years almost? I've never used a grand jury, ever. I've never done it. But this particular case seems to maybe be ripe for it. And so obviously, whenever I'm that kind of person that whenever I'm doing something for the first time, I don't necessarily like to be the, I don't like to just put myself out there and shoot from the head and say, let's see if we get everything right. So I'm probably gonna consult the Attorney General's office, some of those people down and say, okay, this is what I understand the process to be. This is what I plan to do. You guys think I'm right? Am I right? Am I wrong? You guys wanna come up and help? You know, I'll go through that process. Like I said, I've tried a lot of cases. I prosecute a lot of cases, just I, you know, because, you know, the, and of course, grand jury, what about's different than the, what they call a petit jury? And that's the, when somebody's deciding guilt or innocence. You know, like the public trials, like, well, Trump trial now, just use it as an example. What's going on? That's a petit jury, right? That's where the jury's deciding guilt or innocence, stuff like that. Grand jury is deciding probable cause at the beginning of the case. So I've had a lot of petit juries, had a lot of trials. I've never done the grand jury proceeding because I've always just done the trial information, right? Put together trial information, together witness summaries, give it to the judge. Judge approves it, off we go. But for just various different reasons, it seemed like maybe this was an appropriate case to use grand jury on, so. So that's kinda.
Does it, does it pertain to the seriousness of the crime?
You know, I, it might. It, it, although, I mean, we've had, you know, like homicides up here about as serious as you can get where we just use trial information, you know, we don't use grand jury. But I'd say, you know, I mean, I can't say too much about it, but let's just say there are some cases where maybe it can appear that things could go a lot different ways. And, and there just seem to be some cases where maybe the, the community itself, which is the grand jury, is just, is best to just resolve some of these issues. So.
The courtroom closed, then?
Well, it will be whenever that is. What I think? The way I understand it works is, like I said, I don't mean to sound ignorant. There's no use trying to act like I'm an expert on something when I'm not. I mean, I've never used this process, but I'm gonna learn, I'm gonna use the AG's office and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna go forward. My understanding of it is, and I mean, I'm always grand jury, you know, law school, you know, you studied a lot, but yeah, courtroom is closed and I think, you know, pretty much, you know, you have the grand jury in there, prosecutors in there, witnesses stream in and out, take testimony and, and things like that, and then at the end of it, the grand jury signs. Like I say, the feds, they use them all the time. What they do is they'll have like grand jury days. Like Cedar Rapids decide how I understand it works. Sheriff probably knows more about this than I do, right? What I understand the process in the fed system, you know, because they, like Sheriff's, they probably work with FBI and stuff fairly often, more than I do. But like in the federal system, they'll have like grand jury days where, you know, you got grand juries from all over the northern district of Iowa, right? Or at least the northeast part of Cedar Rapids. Can't have juries running down there every day for three weeks, right? So what they do, they have like grand jury days where they'll, they'll, they'll have a, this is just the way I understand it works. They'll run a bunch of cases through over a period of a week or, or so, right? And we've just kind of backed back. It's like, okay, we're doing this case now. Everybody in, you know, and I think a lot of times it doesn't take very long, you know? And it's just, it'll be an interesting process. I don't want to say I'm, I'm excited about it. Whenever crime happens, a tragedy happens. It's, it's not something a person enjoy, just, but it's an opportunity to, I guess, you know, be, learn something new, you know, be a part of, just, I don't know. Law's fascinating to me. I guess that's why I'm a lawyer and this is another opportunity to like engage in some of the lit differents, say, hey, so anyway. Thank you.
All right. Something else? We'll go with the sheriff up there. Sheriff, one second?
No, perhaps. I just have one thing for you. I know I've been talking the last couple of weeks, maybe the last couple of months actually, about purchasing a vehicle for the, for the jail staff. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna spend that money. I can solve that problem another way. They can begin to share a vehicle that's gonna go out of rotation. I'll probably take the graphics off it so it doesn't look like a police car for their safety. Put them in that. I think we can use that as well as spending money on another vehicle and everything that goes with that. So that's, I'm gonna put that to rest. Just so you know, that's how I'll solve that problem. So that won't be a topic of discussion any longer. That's really all I have for you guys this morning. Just wanted to update you on that. If you have questions for me, I'll take them, or if the public asks questions, I'll be happy to take those too.
With that vehicle, will you house that? Just in your parking lot or our parking lot?
It'll be in the salad port where it, where it is now. Yeah.
So that won't be an inconvenience, right?
Yeah.
There'll be days you may not use it, right?
That's true. Yeah. Have you started the housing for, for the county or is it? Oh, they're bringing inmates today. Yeah, that'll start today. So that'll be good there. Yeah. It's okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Department head discussion. And department head, conservation, please?
Yeah, conservation would have their monthly meeting last month or last week. They had one last month too, but we also had one last week. Busy time year for us right now. School year's wrapping up, so usually May, end of April is our big field trip year. So the last several weeks, we've had a lot of kids coming out from St. Ansler, Riceville, and Osage, coming out to the nature center. We got May term going on this week, so we're busy with that. We started stump grinding as well. Just kind of information for the public to know. We won't be able to get all the stump grinding done before the holiday weekend, which is Friday. Just the way it goes. We'll get as much of it as we can out of the way, but we'll be slowing down this week mainly because of the rain and B because campers are pulling in. But the holiday weekend's here, believe it or not, we're at the end of the month. Things we talked about last week, Elaine with the Wopsi Trails was there. We had the Iron Horse Marathon run. Again, remember that one is a pre-qualifier for the Boston Marathon. So you can go to that, run it, and then you qualify for the Boston Marathon. They had doubled the count from what they had last year, which was great to see. We discussed, we did sell some credits out at the wetland thing and we've got some other bids out there right now, so we're waiting to see on those. We reviewed quotes for cameras at several facilities. We ended up selecting one quote to be put up at the Mitchell Dam so that we can get some surveillance on that facility due to the fact that, you know, damage was to cause to it. It could be a very significant type thing, especially if someone throws a rock through the window and it hits the generator or lands at the wrong point of the generator. We want to make sure that's kind of watched and protected. We also reviewed some equipment quotes on some equipment pieces that we needed. We also went through the Mitchell Mill Dam project that we've got scheduled. And we'll be going out this week notifying the public, but basically the long story starts. We got all the variances and licenses, so starting September eleventh, unless it's flooding, which right now hopefully we won't be, but starting September eleven, that is when we will begin to draw down the upper pool of the Mitchell area. It'll take, we can only do one foot per day, so as far down as we need to, probably somewhere around the twentieth, twenty fourth, somewhere in there is when we'll be done draining to the point where we can do our work. September twenty fourth, then we'll begin our prep work of getting the area set so we can. And around October first, our contractor should be on scene. So that project will take anywhere between two to six weeks. It's gonna be based on what the concrete looks like after we drain the water out. And we'll be notifying the public starting this week on Facebook, social media. Then in June, and I'm sorry, July and August, we'll be doing newspaper ads and information as well too, and getting stuff out there on that. So that is what we discussed last week, you know, the, the big stuff happening.
Did you say October one is when the contractor shows up?
Contractor shows up, yeah, because it's gonna take two weeks to draw the cool down. So we'll start, we want to wait till after Labor Day, which September eleventh is like the Wednesday after Labor Day. So, and it takes two weeks. Other questions? All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other department head discussion?
Nothing at all.
How many engineer update?
Morning.
Morning.
I have a few quotes to kind of run past, few quotes. Kind of reviewed the, I tried to get in a third quote for our salt shed and I got no response from the individual. We're gonna try to look at, we're other lumber products that make a wood structure, but I remember the quote, I found their quote from about six, seven years ago when it was higher than, than the ones we've got now, so I can't imagine they got any cheaper with inflation or anything else. So kind of reviewing some of the quotes, we've got two of them. I had one of the individuals resubmit just based on the fact that they thought we needed to put a new floor in our salt shed. We don't really need to do that. There'll be modifications we need to do to the floor in there once we get things relocated. But I don't know if it's something we can act on or not. It's just, it's a, it's a quote for a new structure which the insurance company is gonna cover. I think, I have to talk to them a little bit more, but they kind of salvaged the building at about eighty five thousand plus or minus for what depreciation was from the original building. So if we take our lowest quote, which is from Greenfield Contractors, it's a, the building, the quote includes the building, which includes the labor to build it, and then it also, instead of a wood, instead of a wood foundation around it, we're gonna use precast T panels. And that'll most likely last longer than the wood that we had before. And then including in that quote, then the T panels also will be coated with a, not a corrosion inhibitor, just to kind of keep the salt from leaching through the concrete or the brine from leaching through to the steel. The things we'd have to do with this quote, we'd have to kind of obviously remove all the salt from the existing location, move it out of the way. They quoted it, have a clear level pad. So we would have to put a little bit of effort into removing the old base and structure and giving them a level pad. We'd also ask, have to excavate for the base of the T panels and put rock back down and support it. And then when we're done, we'll have to put a little bit of asphalt background. So what we'll have to do is kind of cut a, cut a border around it so they can set the T footings back in at the existing sixty two foot wide footprint that we have now. That quote, to do, the quote for that company to do the work is a hundred and twenty six thousand four twenty four ninety five. The other company was a hundred and sixty, did I say? Hundred twenty six four twenty four ninety five. The other one's a hundred and sixty four two eighty five. And the other company was gonna do a cast in place wall with rebar and footings and they wanted to, you know, they, the expense itself is a lot higher, the building, the individual building and labor is more expensive and the building itself is more expensive. Probably still have to move all the salt, get rid of the old footing and cut and do everything else to get them prepped too. So I don't know if we can act on this today or not. I probably should still talk to the insurance company and find out exactly what, if I, if I got a quote here, it's similar to what they anticipated. They may be able to adjust their prices. I don't know what they'll do with insurance. The, the quote they gave us or the, the loss they gave us wasn't, you know, it's based on the old building and it doesn't constitute an agreement to go ahead and start rebuilding. So I'm gonna contact them a little bit more, but I wanted to give you guys an update on where that was. And if things are good to go with insurance, should we be good to go to this higher, that other, the lowest quote for the building? We've got two hundred and ten thousand dollars left in the, in the grounds budget for fiscal twenty four. We've got another two hundred thousand in grounds for fiscal twenty five. And that was budgeted because we didn't know when we were gonna be doing a facility replacement. We were gonna plan on replacing at least the cover, but we didn't have a cost on that and then anything else that comes up. So maybe next week I'll give you a better idea of what we got from the insurance company and what they might want to cover. But those are the numbers. Well, the one is good until May thirtieth, which is the higher quote. The other one, we've, I've been in contact with them recently just to get some, a better, last week I called to get a better idea. It doesn't say, I don't think it says whether it's a thirty day quote, but we got it beginning of the month, so if we have thirty days, we should be okay. So that's that one to discuss, just so you guys have an idea. I want to get going on that because it's still ten to twelve weeks for materials to be delivered and ordered and things like that. So the other quote I have, we've got some doors on some of our facilities. Riceville has a, has a, I think they've got three doors on their facility that all are leaking when they open the doors up. The waters are so, the, the doors are so waterlogged when they open them up. They're just heavy and, and really work on the motors. And they're old enough now, they probably should be replaced. We got a quote from Overhead Door to get three doors replaced there. Including with the water logging, there's also, I think the hinges have been moved so many times because the holes have been wore out. They try to adjust the hinges to, to keep them in place and they're just getting to the point where you can't hardly move hinges anymore without getting holes next to holes. So we've got three doors there and then we want to replace the, the four doors in the Osage facility too. They've been rusting out on the bottom and also collecting water and hinges are being moved around. So I don't know if I should grab another quote, but we usually use Overhead Door for everything. So we're looking at roughly a good chunk of money there to replace these doors. I don't want to give the quote on unless you think we should get one or two more quote for doors. I don't want to give an advantage. I don't want to give the next person the advantage of knowing what the other person's quote was. If you guys feel we should get another quote, but it's kind of a maintenance thing. We don't necessarily have to, but Overhead Door's been doing all of our maintenance.
Been pretty happy with it, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't I?
I'm okay with Overhead Doors.
Okay.
Thing I'm worried about is, probably you guys are too, that's quite a safety issue, that water hanging on doors.
Well, in the wintertime, you know, that water freezes or just, yeah, when you open the door up, you've got water dripping on anything that comes in and out. Plus, it's a lot of, it takes a lot on those motors to open those doors when they're waterlogged like that. You know, you could drill holes, but something's not right when they're taking water. They should be sealed up, so. So if we're good with that, we'll just contact Overhead Door and get them moving. I don't know if I take some time to get that.
Get some money in your budget.
Yep, that's still coming out of, that'll still come out of that same budget item as the, the building will. So I think we'll be okay.
I'll put a question back on this. So shed, maybe I just missed it, but you were talking about the, you'll be putting concrete pillars up.
Will be precast T sections, kind of like a silage bunker would have.
Yeah.
Similar to that. I haven't seen the, the design of the Ts, but it's a common thing for these salt companies or the, these hoop building people use, especially.
Okay, and then, so what will be the raw?
It'll be another fabric hoop building.
I doubt, is, is that silage cover heavy enough or are you gonna start over?
No, we'll, the, the hoop, the hoop itself, the fabric on there is a whole different material than the silage cover is. It's, it's infused with inhibitors for the sun and a little heavier material too. Is that what you're asking? Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that silage bag isn't even big enough to cover. I mean, it would be, they're, they're more of a temporary cover.
Yeah, they change them every year.
Well, right, yeah, because they're, I think, when we move all of our salt out, we might have to buy another cover just because it'll probably be damaged by us rolling it back and moving the salt out. Because we want to do, what we want to do is get a bed of sand and put the salt on a bed of sand. That way, we're not gonna lose any salt and we mix sand with salt anyway in the wintertime. So as we scoop the sand and salt back together, we'll put it back in the hoop building. I'll kind of have a little pre-mix too if it's ready. So, but that's one way to eliminate loss of salt. And then, once we move it all out, we're gonna want to cover it. You know, we're hoping that we don't get rain. I mean, we could, we could run the risk of stacking it and not getting rain for the duration of when they build it, but for five hundred bucks, put a cover on it, another, another tar. But it might be, you know, you know, having to weigh it down and make sure we've got it all sealed up for the window, take it. There's some things we gotta look at yet, but for the most part, we'll probably destroy the old, old silage cover just trying to, to take the salt out. So, but it's all gonna be based on timing. What we want to do, we want to time the removal of the salt, stockpiling it closer to when they're gonna come and put the building up. That way, there's less exposure. If we can get by, if we know it's only gonna take them a week to build after we've got everything cleaned out, then we can kind of time it. And maybe we don't need to buy another cover and move things back.
And I'm assuming all the sheds are full?
Yeah, we're, we're full.
Yeah, because I seen the claims there a couple weeks ago.
We.
So there's no, not transferring it from one shed to another?
No, all, we, we wanted to make sure everything, and all the sheds use a mix. So at the end of the year, we kind of pre-mixed everything and made sure that everything was full. We should have anyway, so.
Okay.
There's not a whole lot of, we don't want to haul salt, raw salt out and bring it back to mix it or mix it at another site, just another process.
Yeah, I'm really thinking.
But we're, you know, it's a matter of, we're gonna stockpile it on site anyway. Kind of looked into, maybe we could use an L, a belt system to lift it, but I mean, by the time you rent a belt system and a generator to run, run the sack or whatever, we're money ahead just using a loader. We're only gonna move it fifty to a hundred feet away. So it's not like we really need to get too technical with moving, moving the salt out.
Thank you.
I'll confirm everything with you next week then.
Very good.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Discussion on possible action on consideration of eminent domain statement for I U B. We got a, we have a letter here. On behalf of Mitchell County Board of Supervisors, I am registering our opposition to grant eminent domain for Summit Carbon Solutions Carbon Capture Project that is proposed to be constructed in and through Mitchell County. Mitchell County Board believes that each landowner should have the right to decide if they want the carbon pipeline on their property. That is the letter I have approved and sent to the I U B board.
I'll make a motion to approve that letter to the I U B board.
Our motion is our second. Second. Any other discussion?
We'll call a time.
Oh, actually, I do have one thing before we get started. I, I've been thinking about this and going through a lot of the stuff that you guys just brought to us and I'm not prepared right now for a black and white yes or no on this. I've talked with both sides. Summit Carbon Pipeline are willing to work with most landowners and that's the last thing they want to do. I'm not for eminent domain, but I'm not ready just to put a yes or a no. And like I said last week, I'm going into it with an open mind.
Any other discussion?
We'll call a time.
I'm gonna stay in.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion on possible action on community club request.
Anybody here from Chris? Nope. You shook your head, no, I'm sorry.
Request for five hundred dollars for Carpenter. Carpenter Day is on August sixteenth.
Did we get that in the email?
What's that?
The.
I believe Mike. I got it.
So that's what they want?
That's what they got from us.
Nobody's here to discuss.
I think they're all, they're all employed.
So I believe the resolution number twelve eighteen dash twenty-four. We have a motion to approve the Carpenter Community Club request. Twelve eighteen dash twenty-four.
I'll move to make that motion.
That motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
We'll call, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Sidney. Bye. Jim.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Motion second, I didn't get it, I'm sorry.
Todd, Sidney.
Todd, Sidney, okay.
Discussion and possible action on twenty twenty-four Riceville Housing Urban Renewal Resolution. Yes, or the resolution twelve eighteen dash twenty-five?
Twelve nineteen, Cindy.
Over nineteen forty-five?
Twenty nineteen twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four. Okay. Riceville's requesting urban renewal for some housing going in their city, looks like the school signed off on it.
Want to read the regulation?
Good. Whereas the city of Riceville, Iowa, the city, is in process of establishing a twenty twenty-four housing, or Riceville Housing Urban Renewal Area. Urban Renewal Area. Assistant to chapter four oh three of the Iowa code, which includes a real property described in exhibit, exhibit A, Metro, the property. And whereas project development needs to be respect to the property will require that the city use intimate property tax revenues as provided for the section four oh three nineteen of Iowa code, Code of Iowa, receive with respect to the property, pay the cost of the construction of public infrastructure improvements thereon necessary for the development of a housing subdivision in the urban renewal area. And whereas section four oh three dash point twenty-two of the Iowa, of the Code of Iowa prohibits cities from collecting incremental property tax revenues for this type of project more than eleven years without the express consent of any affected county and school district. And whereas the city council of the city has requested that the Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa approve this resolution in order to allow the city to use incremental property tax revenues from the property for five additional fiscal years as provided by law. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa as follows. Section one, proceed, proceed in section four oh three point twenty-two of the Code of Iowa. This Board of Supervisors hereby approves the use of the city of Riceville, Iowa, the future incremental property tax revenues provided process with respect of the property for a total period of up to sixteen fiscal years. Section two, the county auditor is hereby directed to forward any executed copy of this resolution to the City Council of the City of Riceville. Passed and approved May twenty-first of twenty twenty-four. So it's like sixteen fiscal years. If motion is our second.
Our second.
Any other discussion?
Is this an eighty, I'm all for this, but questions, is this an eighty, twenty to reviate process? And what's the amount to exceed a mile? I'd also like, I'd also like you to read the city debt information as far as all those numbers. The, the only point I have a lot, this, this is totally the way things should be done. That, this is how you approve the county, so I'm all for this. But they need to be here to describe this themselves or whoever wrote this subtext to be here. It's not up to us to describe what they have sent us. And no offense to you, Mark, but you don't, you don't have those answers and, but there's nothing wrong with that. They should be here describing that stuff. That's my point, okay?
I think this is very similar to what happened in San Antonio.
It is, it is. But, but they need to be here to describe what they want to have happen for themselves.
So do you like to table it for a week?
No, I'm good with it, but that's, that's just my point, that I read all through that and it is what we do and it's, it's the process to do it, but on a cordiality, they should be here to describe what they want from us.
Meeting in contact with the president?
I already knew what they sent us.
So the way, the way it's set up is if they can do this. Excuse me. By code, they can do this for eleven, I thought it was ten years, this is eleven years. They can do this without our permission for eleven years, they don't need our permission. What they want is another five years extension. And so they need permission in order to do that if they want an extra five years. So that's what's happening here.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm good with, I just, that was the point I had a lot, okay?
All right, we'll call it, Tom.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Sidney. Bye. Mike.
Hi.
Mark.
Yeah.
Discussion and possible action on increasing liability amount. Last week, the Heartland Insurance came and question was raised if we have enough liability insurance and she said for our county our size, we're on the lighter end of it, I guess. So we could either up it, leave it. And the question got brought up that if we up it, then we do have a lawsuit, then it'll just get, that'll be the amount that they sue for. Which is one way to look at it. But being on the board of Heartland Insurance, the other counties have higher limits and they've had big lawsuits and they've never went for that amount. You could argue both sides, I guess. And they had one with a snowfall, it was backing up on a state road and somebody ran into him, one person died, one lost his leg and they never reached. They settled out of court for way less than their maximum was, so. Anything can happen to a person, you know?
That's why I took that too, that we could sit here all day and ponder. I do have a question I didn't, I should have asked last week, like, so we're at five million. Do you know what the premium is, Rachel? I don't expect you to, but. Because it says here, if we go, say, up to six at seventy-four thirty. I'm wondering, were we at five or six thousand before this? I don't remember.
Rent for the premium?
Yeah. See, for some reason, I don't know why sixty-six hundred sticks in my mind, but.
I would like to see them provide a document that has the list of the counties and the populations and then what other counties have for liability. Rather than just a statement that they make that you're on the low end and then I'd like to actually do the comparison to to see where we're at, rather than just a comment to try to sell us more, that's all.
Sure, but, I mean, that's their county, they can do what they want, and this is Mitchell County, so we should look out for ourselves or.
That, that's true, but I mean, the, the question was asked to them as far as where do we compare with other counties? And they just said, well, you're, you're on the low end. Well, that really doesn't tell me much as far as are, are you four on the low end? Are we on the lowest end? Are we fifth on the lowest end? I mean, it's just a statement that they made and I would like to have seen something that again, just a point that I have, so.
Yeah, I did. I'm sure she'd give it to us. Not secret, I guess.
Could you, could you check with her and see what it is now? What we're paying now? I know, I think you got to have it done by the end of the month, don't we? May or is it June?
Yeah, we have to.
End of the month. So, and then, because where I'm going with that, you know, if you go up one or if you go up two, what's the best buck for your, bang for your buck, you know? And I, I would like to maybe know that and.
Don't we can wait till next week and it's more information, I guess.
Be okay with that.
Go ahead. I got what we're paying, well, Rachel would have what we're paying this year. But yeah, I can find out from the other counties and, and what our premium is now.
And since we've been on the board, we've we've been on the lower end every, it seems like every year when we discuss this. So if you'd want to do that, then we can bring it back.
We took a pretty good dump this year for premium because we were low on.
We had a lot of stuff that wasn't even on the list. Yeah, and the buildings were under insured and.
Mark, if you're going to talk with them, can you just ask them about uninsured motorists too? When Kevin had that problem solved at Riceville with the tractor, from what I remember, that driver did not have insurance, so I just wondered, do we have any uninsured motorists coverage for somebody damages? One of our employees, but they don't have insurance, I mean, anything like that or?
Yeah. Yep, I can check on those items.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sure, I don't know what the, what our number is, but I know we're, we haven't recovered that uninsured.
We do have, okay, all right.
I know, I know, the amount, but yeah. Jack Evans was pretty bad.
Does a bad deal.
I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, he was running a motor grader out of Palomont County.
Good, good deal.
No.
Last week on the job, he was hit by somebody.
Last day.
Last day, yeah.
Really?
Yep.
His wife took a principal's job over and over by Emmitsburg. I knew this, it was Friday. Two thirty, he was coming south to Riceville mowing. You could see the water tower. Last half hour on the job and somebody come and hit him in the back with a mower. Spun him around, told the mower, he laid there. It was hot that day. Idle oil was two hundred plus degrees and sprouting down his arm and the side and he was in Iowa City for weeks. First responders come out of Riceville and he's on the fire department and first responders, so they all know him. And they could hardly recognize him.
It was a bad deal.
What kind of luck is that? Half hour from punching off or cleaning up your locker and.
I forgot it was the last, I thought it was last week, but I, last, I forgot that.
Just the last day, I saw him earlier in the day and I was going around checking things, said, good luck to you, and then I heard the call over radio and that was, I mean, very lucky. No broken bones, but him.
Burned bad. Well, on a lighter note. Discussion and possible action on courthouse emergency action plan. At our safety meeting last week. We okayed the courthouse, student courthouse action plan. And then it gets brought to us. Okay, I guess. Chris, anything?
Some clerical changes, I guess. Nothing too dramatic.
They'll get updated once the new annex is done.
Right.
So, the motion approved, uh courthouse residency action plan. Our motion is our second.
Second.
Second, any other discussion?
We'll call Mike.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Sidney. Bye. Mark.
Hi.
Items of note, meetings attended.
I had a Mitchell Soil Water Conservation District meeting. They asked me again about the snow build binder, they, they need that back. People are coming in and wondering if their application has went through and they don't have anything to reference it about, so they, they need that, that binder.
Got it.
Okay. They're having trouble with we can call it trespassers coming onto their their farm ground that's up I O Trano. And it's four wheelers, they actually, yeah, four wheelers, they actually drug a wooden bridge, the way I understand it, from somewhere else, so they can cross a creek and they they're definitely violating the ground. They put trespassing sign on. Ran right over the top of that. At this point. I don't know if they want to contact the sheriff or not, I suggested that they do that, but I don't know if they want to do that yet.
Yeah, I haven't heard from anyone.
Okay, I think they're trying to still be neighborly neighbors, but at any rate. But they got that going on. Let's see here. Milk is going to get a hold of some people in regards to the eighteen years of water sampling that he's done. The Rock Creek Water Coordinator has left, he went to do, get a different job. And so Milk's concerned in regards to the how that process is going to continue on because, you know, realizes that he's not always going to be able to do that. So there'll be a subcommittee that will be discussing future plans for that. Has to do with data storage, the management of it and the frequencies of it. They're thinking that there's possibility we would have to do quite so many frequencies because the mean of all those testings have been some of them are are not varying all that much. So maybe some of those frequencies could be lessened a little bit. Move to other locations possibly. That's kind of it for that. And I had Osage City Council meeting last night. I guess they went through different things, the big topic is where have I got it? At any rate, they updated their urban renewal plan, they do that every year, so Land State Partners was there and they updated their urban renewal plan again. Got a couple of city events that's going to be happening. One of them will be June eighth.
April eighth?
Yeah. And then we've got a cook-off happening, I think it is this weekend, I don't see it on here.
Yeah, it's this week.
This weekend, okay, so they'll close off a road and an alley and they have a, they did it last year, a big cook-off happening, so. It's all ahead.
All my committees took a break this month, so.
Go to the conservation meeting, like, discuss around that mental health awareness walk. I served it.
I did too.
I mean, self-service.
Good luck.
Yeah, it was good.
Sorry, grab my.
We have safety meeting, a little over there. Courthouse Emergency Plan, they talked about maybe a second nineteen person got brought up, but they thought, Brian thought he just been able to get outside help to get caught up and then go from there.
I had none.
All right. Public comments, I mean, public comments, yes, man.
I just want to say thank you to the board for your vote. Just want to say thank you to the board for your vote, um, to, uh, to make a statement to the I U B against eminent domain and also for your consideration of land on the rights. Mitchell County, so thank you very, very much.
I would just add to that, that Summit made the request to use eminent domain, so if they're really serious about just voluntary. Um, commitments from landowners, they could rescind that request.
All right, any other public comments? Uh, during the meeting at nine twenty.